Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Day's march to work 2013, time is 7:00 PM in the regular meeting, Rainsborough City Council has called order. Call please Bridgette.
Darryl.
Here.
Here.
Blake.
There.
Glenn.
There.
There. Minutes from the Pittsburgh work meeting, councilor, if you look at it, do you see any changes or corrections?
I don't know if we need to need this in there or not, but in the where we made the decision without this person, it didn't say, it doesn't include where those dollar funds will be paid from, I don't think it's necessary that it is, but it's not noted. I think when we acted on it, we acted on it with the knowledge, at least, I don't know if it's grasp, but with the knowledge that we were designating certain funds, certain appropriations around particular files.
Bridgette, do you have any questions?
Yes, I think the small business center was changed from
Yeah.
To added funds and that's noted with the other ones.
Right, that one's that one's there, but the others, I don't see, because it was the word right. And again, I'll, just, just to know where it is, I just didn't know if that was important enough to be corrected or not, it's up to us and the council.
Those minutes, the name will be checked in.
And, and the other, the last note, Mark talked about sending out a mailing and so forth on the ordinance, I thought maybe the kids, Bridgette, should not be in force until the end of the month.
It won't be.
And it says March 15th here.
That's the date that
That's the date that they, that is affected, yeah, but then, because the billing cycle is not going to force it until the end of the month, so that might need to be changed, I guess.
Yeah, next, we have those two changes. Anything else, council? We entertain the motion to accept the minutes with those two amendments as noted. I'll make one. Second. All those, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Thank you. One thing on our old business, very old business, Mr. Murray, city engineer.
Well, the old business item is the proposed sign ordinance. Since the last meeting, I was asked to do a chart of what our existing sign ordinance is, and it was tried to put into the same format as proposed, so you could compare the different sign sizes, numbers, heights, between the old ordinance and the new ordinance. And then I was also asked by Councilman Teddy to look at where the verbiage in the new proposed ordinance differed from the chart in the ordinance that was brought forward to you. So that has been done, and if there's any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer whatever I can.
Counsel, there has been some changes in the signage. Last month, we reviewed that after Gary came up with something, the comparison between what was and what the proposed ordinance is. You know, I support whatever you guys decide, I just wanted the council to be aware of what the changes actually are. Some of them are pretty, pretty drastic.
Yes, they are.
Compared to what they are now. I'm not opposed to that, as long as the council understands what they are.
And my purpose was to, because we had looked at the chart and adopted it to coincide with what we had in order to make sure that it would be something that could be easily seen and understood as opposed to just there. And while some of the chart we've gone through and looked at in a very careful way, the other aspects of it, we didn't get, partly because it has categories for certain speeds and certain number of lanes and so forth. So in order to kind of make sure we had saying one thing and kind of lighting up another, I have to hear you to do that. Not that we need to, I wasn't trying to take away from the chart, I just want to get some clarity before we make some decisions. And so I'm not prepared tonight to review those line by line. I thought that I just wanted Gary to bring that information, so we have it here, you would have, we had questions, they ask about it now, but we, another, that's how we actually begin to adopt it as an ordinance. Tonight's purpose, I don't have a condition to be getting that information, also to hear business owners or the public at large, have you seen it or have some information about it, figure what their comments might be, take that as a similar to begin to go through it very carefully and
I guess, well, a couple of thoughts that I have on it. Scott, were you able to, were you able to look at it, and do you know, do you have any concerns from a public safety standpoint with the new ordinance?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I did get, I did receive one phone call, one request for a copy of the new proposed ordinance for a resident and a copy of the old, so I have had one inquiry so far, and I have read that information, Mr. Battie, I provided it by email, so I don't know if he's in the audience tonight or not, but anyway, that's the only input I've had from anybody else.
Gary, I'd like to ask you this, what are the two largest changes that you see, two biggest changes in what we have now?
The two biggest changes, I mean, there's a lot of
In your view?
The size in a couple districts, I think, almost in one district, it allows for almost double the square footage of what is visible now. It goes from 200 to 378 or 376, I don't remember right offhand.
But that's if setting the water speed up, right?
I can't say that I've memorized the chart, I haven't tried any, but there's, in other districts, yeah, the one big thing I did notice was that temporary signs are allowed in residential districts for our current ordinance, but there's nothing allowed in residential in the proposed, so yard sale signings or anything like that, I think those might be exempt, but, you know, I think there's a couple of places where we're going to have to go back and read. Some of the heights are different, you know, the height of the sign can be just as detrimental as how far it is from the road to be able to be seen, because anytime you have to crank your neck to look up as you're trying to read it, because it's so high, could be, you know, just as bad as being too far off the road and too small, so. There's just a lot better clarity in the definitions, a lot less ambiguity in the package.
Do you see any problems with this implemented way it is, if you're structuring it the way it would be?
I did include in my breakdown, I think there is a proposal in the table to limit the number of individual signs within a sign, and I think I took a picture of Walmart's sign where it had eight or 10 panels, and so does one for tractor supplies, so, I don't, you know, I don't know, those don't seem out of line to me, in either square footage or height or the number of panels that are in there, but some of the limitations on those panel numbers would make several of our signs out of compliance right now.
So we're reducing that?
We allow a square footage currently, and you can put any number of stores or shops sign within that square footage, and that's for the developer to allocate how many different spaces he can break it up into. Right now, where Blockbuster was, it was one tenant, which is now being split into two, so, you know, do you reallocate that square footage from Blockbuster to two others? It seems to make sense, but do we necessarily limit that, or do we limit the total square footage that's allowed to identify the shopping center?
Right now, there's eight or 10 on our Walmart sign. The new ordinance, what could be?
Again, it's, it's in the chart, I think it's six, might be the maximum one of them.
Which would force somebody to put up a second sign, if they wanted to do it, because they
Well, do you limit the square footage, and again, you can't have a second sign unless you've got so much frontage. So if you do have a big center like a Walmart, you've got 700 feet of frontage, we do allow a second sign to advertise tenants that might be on either side of that complex with multiple entrances.
Those signs, they're in compliance with our current ordinance, that wouldn't be in compliance with the new?
Correct, with the, with the chart that's proposed right now.
They may be grandfathered, right?
Yes, they would be grandfathered. But, I mean, again, it's for the council to determine the appropriateness of, you know, the sizes and the dimensions, that's, I'm just trying to point out the differences between what we currently have, where we don't limit the number of panels per sign.
Because right now, you're seeing that we limit the number of panels, like six, and there's going to be eight or 10 businesses that are made up of a second sign, and they may not be
Somebody doesn't, somebody doesn't get a, what I would call a site sign, they can still have their, you know, sign for their facade to identify their building, but somebody may get left out on a sign that's in a shopping center.
Something we had to be, keeping it as it is would be an advantage towards the new ordinance.
Again, I've not seen, in a lot of the jurisdictions that I've, that we've reviewed from the start of this, I will say the table is a little different, I don't know of any jurisdiction that doesn't buy the number of lanes and the speed, or try and go limit the number of panels within an individual sign.
Signs assigned to square footage, you need to
If the business doesn't want to pay for as, as much as they can on that side, then they, they put them on that whole mountain.
Please, counsel.
I'd be interested to hear from business owners and crowd. If anyone has a comment.
Public discussion, please come forward. Business owners, speak. Did you agree to everything you had to say?
Sure.
You're not going to talk about all that tonight, are you?
Unless we have to, but I did bring the facts, and I think that's why we're here tonight. When the council got together and Glenn did a great job of leading the committee and pushing along to keep it from being stalemate, our number one goal was to do what's going to be best for the city, included in that the safety, the ease of a business owner to get a permit, to get a signed permit without a variance. And to answer some Gary Murray's questions, with square footage increase, within the last five years, the city of Greensburg has amended their ordinance, which skews some of these items that we're talking about. Another deal with the amount of tenants that can be on a multi-tenant sign, such as Walmart Plaza and a few others in town, the facts, and the reasoning behind that is to prevent clutter and keep a nicer, cleaner look for the city. Being an advertisement, I love everybody to advertise, but over-advertising can be clutter, and also you can only read so much going down the road at a time, and that's why the minimum was put out there. And that's why the chart that is maybe so unique to some, is so good for us, because it puts us ahead of everybody else. You may not hear about it a lot, just because some cities are stubborn, or they don't get business people involved in, or they don't follow the facts of what's going to work out well, but the chart is basically based on government studies that put up our street signs, tell you how high a, a sign has to be for the distance of visibility, et cetera. So they're all based on safety, visibility, contrast, negative space, there's a lot of mathematics that goes into it as well. If you're driving faster, the sign has to be bigger, you know, it's a common sense to, to some people that deal with it every day, but for a first-time sign buyer or, or a first-time person getting into business, it's real helpful information to do it right. And I guess the bottom line is, you know, the better the businesses do, the better the community, the better the tax base, it's really a win-win for everybody, and also invites businesses to come to Greensburg. You know, I, I ask myself, you know, sometimes, why does a person want to come to Greensburg, Indiana, to open a business up, and I have a hard time coming up with, you know, real legitimate reasons. You know, I like it because, you know, I'm born and bred here, and I, I take pride in the town, and a lot of people do, and I can tell when we, we're on the board together, that we follow the same thing, but we need to publicize this to, to many more people than just the people of Greensburg. If there's any other technical questions involved in this that I can answer, I'll be more glad to answer.
Anything else, council?
Is there anybody else which to comment on in terms of the sign ordinance? We're not going to make a decision like, we're really, then I believe it was set aside for public comment, we've gotten the information, I'm trusting, like, the council, the council members here will, Blake, who's on the, on commission with me, as we were developing this, and as you have heard, there's just an awful lot of detail in this. It's extraordinary that I need that one's there, so it's, it's not only, you know, conceptually, well, this is what we would like, but then you've got to put it into practice, and that means size limits and spaces and different districts and so forth, so I want to go back through and get more carefully again, what we've got from Gary, what we, what I have shared some information with, we've got some information with Dave that I'll pass on to you as well regarding the mathematics and the science with regard to signage and so forth. And I'll pass that along and ask you to review that as well, and then we can come back next month and hear what people must have to say about what our effectives are and what changes there might be, and we'll rely on our good common sense, I guess, to promote everything's proven.
Anything else we want from the next item, the new business? We're trying to have tax abatements, renewal, the committee has studied them over and agreed to renew Metz Tumi building for another year. And the new one is SB 1, rebuilding at GCom Corporation. What was that decided on that?
GCom, we went with a five-year, correct?
Yeah, I think it was, because we've now had employees.
Sure, the addition and the investment, we determined that, we discussed anywhere from three to five and up to 10, but I think 10 is, maybe six to eight years ago, we kind of reduced it to five.
That's reasonable with the
Yes.
We can do these both again, the renewal and MCF1 and the new one next week, GCom. Any questions, council? If not, I would entertain the motion to accept renewal on the Metz Tumi property and the five-year abatement for real estate for GCom Corporation.
Second.
Any further discussion? Three, nine, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passed, thank you. Council library appointment.
You missed Mark Brown.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. Brown.
He left me all day.
What we have is each county has a chief elected official, and the chief elected official are the county commissioners for all, many times they cannot spend the time that's required because of the multiple other jobs, and they had appointed me five years ago to be the Kier County's chief elected official, and I have held that position since, and this is under Region Nine Workforce Development Board. Over the years, the last five years, I guess, four years, yeah, five years, the 12 regions that we have, eight of those have changed, or seven, eight have changed over to Workforce Investment Boards, which we used to have a long time ago. And we have not been given the opportunity or the choice five years ago to go back to the Workforce Investment Board, and we chose not to at that time because we had a lot of elected officials. And after four years, we signed, that's the best way to go. This year especially, in fact, the state now is mandating you have to change to the Workforce Investment Board from where you are now. And that's really a good thing, because the federal government has cut approximately 10% on the workforce employment, and by going to the Workforce Investment Board, we should reduce that amount by 10% to, by eliminating a lot of redundancy. So this is where we're at now, and there's several things involved here that are going to cause some severe changes, and so we'll have to share and working together to make things work, because the other eight are already doing it. Mark, would I go ahead?
Yes, sir, and you probably know our workforce investment system better through the Work One, and the one that's currently out there by Runkin, and the, there are six of them in the 10 counties, and then this is important for Decatur County and Greensburg, because the federal government set this up, that local officials run the workforce investment system, meaning you get to make the decisions how the money is set, spent, invested, where the Work Ones are, and who's employed, but at the same time, that means you get the responsibility if something goes wrong. And what, that's what the federal government wants this region to do, they want the local elected officials, which you find as the county commissioners and leaders of cities over 5,000, those are the folks that have to get together and agree on how financial liability we share. So if there are monies that are misspent, that are not spent correctly, the federal government or the state comes down here and says, you have to pay it back, who's going to pay it back? And right now, the federal government looks at the local officials who are, who signed the agreement. Now, you don't have to, but there's a risk if you don't, because right now, you do have a Work One here in Greensburg. If you decide to opt out and not participate, the Workforce Board can move that, so you don't have a say on whether Work One dollars are spent. So it's, it's probably in your benefit to stay involved, but at the same time, if you want to have, you'll be asked to take some of the risk. Now, saying that, there hasn't been a city or county that's paid back a dime in Indiana since 1998, and that was a one-time occurrence, so it doesn't happen, it hasn't happened. That doesn't mean it won't happen, but the risk is very low. The Workforce Boards are set up so that they can mitigate the risk even further by taking out bonding, insurance, they can also, with contracts, make sure those contractors have some provision in their contract that if they, if they mess up, they have to pay it back, the employees mess up, they have to pay it back, and the Workforce Board has non-federal funds, which they can use to pay it back. So again, the risk is very, very low, but before you can move forward and set up the Workforce Investment Board, you, the local elected officials have to sign this agreement, and Mayor Herbert thought it was important that the council and the Works know about this, because it is obligating the city to a potential financial liability. Now, what we did is, we're, this is just an example of what the agreement could look like, and we met with Chris, and he looked it over, and he thinks it's, it's just pretty solid as far as sharing liability. So if everything's in agreement, the mayor would sign on behalf of the city. And just for example, if you did share, what I did is a spreadsheet based on population, and all the counties and cities are listed here, and done by population, so I subtracted the cities from the county's population and get a pro rate of share. And for example, if there's a thousand dollars that the federal government said is going to spend, that's the breakdown of what everybody shared, I think, I believe Greensburg would be $35 if it had to be paid back. Again, it's never been done, so I want to reiterate that, but at the same time, there is a risk. We hope to have this set up by July 1st, elected officials are starting to talk, Mayor Herbert's leading this discussion, one of the few elected officials mayor that truly taken interest in this, so, but the sooner that the councils and, and the commissioners have this information, the sooner we can be superior to sign this set up. Are there any questions I can answer? I know I didn't talk a lot about our services, I can come back and do that another time, I know you're busy, but we just want to make sure you're aware of, you know, what's going on as far as setting up the Workforce Investment Board.
I think it's important for the council to understand that if we're not involved, and we, we drop all, choose not to be representing elected officials in our boards, then we don't have any, we don't have any input in the directions that we go, in the other communities with the Work. And I, I don't understand what the other regions are doing, but they talked about signing paperwork and documents, I cannot enter into a contract without approval for works, I cannot dedicate money to something unless the council has allocated that for use if needed, so I don't know what the other regions are doing, but I want to make sure that I'm right here. So this is something we don't want to mess with tonight, but we, we finishing things up as we go, the elected officials making the decision, that's the nice things we have to do, the elected officials have to get together, come upon agreement, how we're going to handle the liability issue, and then elect officers, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
And we want to be going by July 1st, if we don't make that deadline, we may go to a state that they would not cut us off with the funds. We also have three contracts to deal with our, July 1st, if those extend, the rates of RBR. So there's a lot to be done, and we just want to claim the council, play what has transpired.
Yeah, and, and the risk of not having agreement, the governor will come in and appoint your board, realistically, he'll appoint people from the area, but then again, the local officials lose control, so. And as a side, I just want to say that the Work One agreed signs, put up the Work One sign order very happy with it. It took him a while.
Well, he may say tonight, "Well, I can't wait to do it." As soon as this sign order is passed, I'm going to buy one or two large piece of carpet I have at the, at the Rose Garden. And we're going to advertise, send many people moving to Greensburg because of signs. It'll be an ideal place, right next to the interstate. New people Honda that live in our way, save your dollars and your gas, your cars, and move to Greensburg and bring them home.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark.
Is there any, obviously, is that the Board of Works meeting or something? When was this question, where works? From my perspective, I don't know what we have to wait on. I think that it is our best interest to be a part of that.
And the reason we did this then is so we can get feedback from the Board of Works and the council. So when I sat down with the people to negotiate, I knew what I could say, what I can agree with. So we know that the council believes this is in our best interest. And the other counties are willing to share in the liability according to the population, or one-tenth of it, because we have 10 counties. Where we come up with, I think, would be very, very, with the amount of risk that you take, because there's not much there to take if there is a liability or something with it. And that's why we have our checks and balances to make sure things like that don't.
And we did receive the same presentation after the board was, there was really no discussion about it. Take that advisement.
With these, the two groups, the Board of Works and council, kind of work hand to hand. And I respect what the board says. But that does help me, and so long as they're willing to share equally to a point, then it's, we should proceed forward. Next, the library appointment. The council.
Well, I've got, though we mentioned there were three different individuals that had been mentioned last month. I don't know what others have thought. As I said, I did, I did check out. Both the other two individuals are willing to, I would recommend looking for Joanne Fly, in part because she is an active, pretty active there at the library, does a lot of volunteering there already, is familiar, longtime patron, would have some insight from that perspective for the board. And I would, her name was a nomination for that position.
She has three good candidates, just a little more hands-on library.
I would second that nomination. I know she is involved in the Runkin quite a bit.
Any further discussion? Folks in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, same as aye. Mrs. Frye, she's the next to point of it. She will be notified. Thank you. Scott Chastain.
Good evening. Not really looking for any action tonight, just basically bringing you guys up to speed on what's going on at Fire Station with the retirement of Assistant Chief Imweller. I'm looking to appoint someone into that position. I did take resumes, and with the help of my other two assistant fire chiefs, on Rick's time being up and separating the ties with the city, with the mayor's approval, I've moved to promote Brian Winnings to the position of Assistant Fire Chief. Brian has been a captain working for me for 10 years. In the 10 years that I've been fire chief, he's been, he's been one of my captains. And so that will be taking place. He's actually working in the position right now on an interim basis. No additional pay or anything like that right now. That would mean I'd have four assistant chiefs, so. With that then, there'll be a captain's position coming available. And I look probably sometime this week to posting that position and request qualifications and stuff like that, so. Also, with the retirement of Rick, that leaves us short with the guidance of the mayor. I did have, the Board of Works did re-interview one of the candidates, actually the final candidate that was on our high. Earlier last month. And a conditional offer of employment was given with, given to that individual. And at this point, I'm going to call that individual, the candidate. His employer does not know that he's in the process of possibly.
Called the applicant of Board of Works. Candidate.
Okay, applicant, I'll call him applicant. I'll send him a check, just seeing him to pay attention. So he is scheduled for a PRF physical on Thursday. Looking at probably another month to get that turned around through PRF and approval. So hopefully, I'll work with Bridget's office to figure out when the appropriate time to bring him on is. And with that being said, we've expired the entire list that we had prior. So if you've seen the newspaper, we have advertised for candidates to apply and go through the testing. And I will get an, I'll get an email out to you guys for our testing days. And I would love to have you guys come out and watch and do the agility and that kind of stuff, so. That's all, yeah. Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you. Scott, what we're on, we had the same situation with what we had with the candidate left, and qualified and everything. And we re-interviewed him as well. And he's been given a conditional letter of acceptance. At least, at least, thanks. So that's what we're at on that. Next item, Stacy is in here. Neil Maro, Stuart here.
Yeah, I'll just pray to the aldermen.
My name's Jordan Craig. I'm with the Greensburg Police Department and in the process of attempting to re-implement the K9 program for the city. Does everybody have a packet with all the information? As it stands now, the city does not have a police service dog. I'm looking to implement a detection dog for the city. It won't be a bite dog, which reduces liability and things like that. But, you know, actually for Greensburg, it's, could be more beneficial just to, you know, a detection dog to be utilized. It's pretty evident to, I guess, the drug users in the community know, it's known that there's not a drug dog in Greensburg. And, you know, putting this program in would definitely curb the in and out, the illicit drugs in our community. Hands down. As far as the, the cost associated with the program, I've donated my dog. And as you can read through here, he, you know, he's been through selection process and everything like that. The general cost for a detection dog training school is $8,500. This has taken our cost down to $4,000 with the dog and work. He's in pre-training now, and today he actually started his first day of training. The training pipeline's going really well. The Greensburg Animal Medical Hospital, Dr., says Dr. Martin, if I'm not mistaken. He's been real generous, saying he's going to provide shots and model routine care and everything like that to the city at no cost. Anything further, he said, you know, he could work out a discounted rate. A vehicle insert has been donated, you know, contacted the city Columbus, their training officer for the police department. He's donated a vehicle insert, which is about a $2,000 expense that the city would have had incur. That's been donated. And so far, you know, everything with pre-train is going good. I'm not sure if everybody's had time to review this. And the, should talk about the amendment.
Sure. And one of the large, this is the, Jordan first brought this idea of implementation to the Board of Works last, last month. And the Board of Works at that time asked Police Chief Chastain and myself to begin looking into what would need to happen in order to force some implementation. Part of that was drafting a contract for the service agreement between Officer Craig and the city, because he is utilizing his own personal animal for this program. Additionally, the Board of Works had some concerns regarding, one, that Officer Craig was adequately compensated, two, that the, that we were putting in some loop that could be more long-term. We weren't going to expend funds, training an animal, just to have him leave. So in your packet, I believe there, I don't know if I have it in front of me, but I believe there should be a copy of the contract that we drafted there. Additionally, Police Chief Chastain and I both reviewed the current job responsibilities and descriptions for the, for patrolmen, which will include the K9 units. The only change that I think would be necessary would be an amendment to that because it currently reads that the officer would need to be a resident of Decatur County. I believe when that was first drafted, that was the state of the law. Indiana law is actually that the officer would need to be a resident of one of the contiguous counties within the county that he is going to serve. Officer Craig does not actually live within Decatur County, but he does live within one of the contiguous counties. So we would need to amend that job description to remove the phrase "Decatur County resident." That would be the necessary step for this body. The Board of Works, as I'm sure Darrell will report in a second, agreed to allow Officer Craig to continue on with the training and to allow this process to continue. I believe if this board elects to amend the job description to remove the Decatur County residency requirement, that the next step would be Board of Works' final approval on the terms of the contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council has regarding either the steps we've taken thus far, or the terminology, or any of the phraseology of the contract.
I guess my confusion, I'm just wondering, so there's $4,000 that needs to be allocated for the training, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So where's, where's that come because it wasn't budgeted? Right, so this.
Seems anything else, Bridget, any suggestions? Police Department, is that?
They are currently soliciting donations for the K9 program. And I believe they have.
I also applied for some grants of that nature. Just based upon this solicitation letter, Fire Department provided me with a, their mailing list. Based upon their rough estimates for the solicitation they received, that would cover the training and some grant. You know, we could get that ballpark number back along with the grants that I'm applying for. That should be able to help, that should cover the training costs and be able to curb any other costs the city would incur further down the road for the ongoing expense of the program.
I would also note, just to address Councilman King's concern that, and I'm sure Jordan would mention this because I know he mentioned it at the Board of Works, my research did show that successful narcotics K9 units are able to recoup a large portion of their costs through forfeitures and increased convictions.
Well, we've, we've done this before, one of the time. I'm confused, but in terms of trying to, and I know for a while it was successful, but then people get either tired of having to take care of the dog or be responsible for it all the time, or those kinds of things. And there is a, a time period when the animal becomes incapable or retires, I guess is the right word.
Yeah, about the age of, a detection dog can retire about the age of 10.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't remember the sequence of all these things, but. So having said that, that doesn't mean that I'm opposed to, but just putting back into perspective, all the best intentions in the world, sometimes things always turn out. That doesn't necessarily mean that the investment is wasted, just. I guess I have a question about the change in the laws. So the laws, state law supersedes our, our city's expectation that the officer lives in Decatur County?
It does not necessarily supersede. The council can certainly determine that they want their officers to live within a certain area. I'm, I'm saying that a change to allow an officer to live in a contiguous county is simply more consistent with the current state.
All right, all right. And do we have, or at one point we did, I don't know what the status is right now, of the take-home vehicle being within a certain distance of city limits for take-home vehicles?
Two miles.
Please?
Two miles.
So my, my question becomes, if we're, if we're staying in compliance with that, Greensburg is more than, the contiguous county is more than two miles from our, from our city limits.
It's discussing the, the information here. The dog will be, I'll transport him just as if I'm transporting myself to come to work. He'll come with me, and then once we get here, my patrol will be able to wait here.
That's what I want.
Yes, sir. And to clarify something for me, the rule or law, was that the state of Indiana, or Greensburg's rule, that the K9 officer had to live within the county?
That was under the current job description.
So state law is contiguous county, whether it be K9, handler, or military officer?
If I'm not mistaken, that was a, that was a, a somewhat recent amendment made by the former chief.
Yes, yeah, to the job description. Maya, and Chief Chastain will be answering, going to the historical nature of that. That's what I understand, is that was a relative, a recent chief.
Anyone that's first mentioned? No, not again, not again. How many dogs can you hang in there work? And I got to think, it's not the dog gives up, it's, it's the officer. And with Jordan, I think by being his dog and having the attachment to it that he does, that he can stick with it, and we have what a three-year contract that he would have to live by to serve.
And if I may, to address Councilman Tenny's concern regarding the feasibility and the ability to change this or get out of it if necessary, one of the provisions that I added to the K9 service agreement does allow the city of Greensburg, rather at the bequest of the chief, the mayor, or the legislative body, this body, the ability to examine the program and determine if it is no longer feasible or warranted, whether fiscally or otherwise, and determine the contract as a result.
Where in the, where in the job description is the requirement that they live in this county?
It is, I've lost the last page. I apologize, I don't have mine. The last page is the second one, let me see here.
Is the fourth to the last page?
What paragraph do you have?
Third paragraph down.
Yeah, it's under duties, the page that has job requirements listed. This is many service K-9 officers, beginning paragraph. Maintaining residency in Decatur County. Yes, yes. So from, I believe from this body, what you would need is a motion to amend that position description for patrol officer to remove the residency requirement under the K-9 officer position.
And tell me again, for that particular phrase was added in to it? And was it kind of like Chief Eaton, or what was the reference there?
That's, that's my understanding. That's, my understanding is based on my conversations with Chief Chastain. But the chief indicated that that was a phrase that was added in by Chief Eaton.
For the K-9.
For the K-9 officer, I believe there's also the same language for SWAT?
Yeah, tactical team.
Tactical SWAT.
How did you submit it?
I believe in 2010.
That's in terms of, we update the job.
Yeah, revise your K-9s. I, I guess making that amendment might be an easy amendment. But the, the concern too, I think, I share the concern from the Board of Works. When you look at compensation, basically, there's no, no compensation at all. There's not even, when you consider it's like a, I don't want to say it's like a clothing.